I'd like to call to order the Penn Tucket Regional School Committee meeting of September 17th, 2019. Go call Wayne Adams.
Yeah.
Joanna Blanchard is going to be late. Bill Buell is not attending. Emily Dwyer.
Here.
Marie Polzani.
Here.
Dick Hodges.
Here.
Lisa O'Connor here. Chris Redding.
Here.
Gina Trotta.
Here.
Can everybody rise to say a pledge of allegiance?
I'd like to make a pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. In due repartee, for the late Sings, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every and every being and everything.
I'd like to make a, somebody to make a motion to amend the agenda. Bill had sent an email about adding an item to the agenda concerning the fine arts and physical ed programs in our district's elementary schools. I had Mary Ann pass out an email that he sent this morning. It's just an item for discussion.
I move that amendment.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Okay, Jack, could I also make a couple of agenda amendments?
Yeah.
I'd just like to request that we add on just for a discuss and approve the, an alteration to the high school handbook regarding eligibility for athletics. It's very simple, these are difficult. And then also an item regarding, just for just information, the school improvement plan presentation dates.
Move that amendment. Both amendments.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Can I have a motion to accept the minutes of the, I'm sorry, the September 3rd Business Finance and Operations Subcommittee meeting?
Someone?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Can I please have a motion to accept the business meeting agenda, I'm sorry, the business meeting minutes from August 20th, 2019?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. The next item on the agenda is the school committee subcommittee updates, our policy. Marie?
We're meeting Tuesday at 9:00 AM in the Dream of Criminals.
Okay, that's September 24th. Teaching learning accountability?
We met this afternoon and talked about the, where the professional development, the professional development review, curriculum updates, and the decaf. So I will send minutes to Mary Ann. There are a lot of really positive things happening.
Thank you. Communication, Gina?
We have nothing to report.
Okay. Chris, business and finance?
We're meeting after this meeting.
The next item on the agenda is the superintendent news. Oh, I'm sorry, public comment. Any public comment? No, we have a lot of people that know public. Okay, not superintendent news.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Always a pleasure. Getting superintendent's news, my favorite part of the agenda. So tonight we have with us folks from, that are new to Penn Tucket Regional, and I know we haven't done this in the past, but I think this is good tradition. We often see names on pieces of paper, we approve positions. So I think having the opportunity to see the actual people, what they do, and just who they are, putting that name right to face is really important. So we've invited the principals here, and if, I'm gonna, so I'm gonna invite, I'm gonna ask the principals to stand up, and there we go, perfect. So we'll start, I know Mr. Kelly is here in moral support. Mr. Kelly does not have any new personnel with him. So Mr. Kelly, you can sit down now, but thank you for your moral support. We'll start, we'll start with, let's go with Mr. Gray.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to introduce three of our newest staff members to the high school. I'd like to introduce Kay Pro, who's the assistant principal. And then we have Cara Conway, who's our new adjustment counselor. And then Terry Colagino, who's our new special education teacher in regards to our therapeutic intervention. Hello. Welcome.
Thank you for having us as well. So for the Bad Mau school, we have four staff members to introduce. First one is Megan Cridas, and she's our speech and language pathologist. They're a little nervous, no one wanted to sit in front of them. Danielle Stappola, and she is our new kindergarten teacher. Caitlin Hill Foyle, she is our new special education coordinator. And last but not least, my right-hand man, Jim Day, is the new assistant principal.
Thank you very much, you're here. And we'll now go to Mr. Seaton.
So we have two new staff members at the high school this year. Our new percussion instructor, Joe Hartigan, in addition to teaching here, he teaches at the Zach Field Drum Studio. He's teaching tonight, and he wasn't able to be with us, so that would be one of our new staff members. And we're delighted to have a new school adjustment counselor with us this year, so Shelby White.
And you guys are all here. So matter of fact, of course, they have their curriculum night tonight, so they're all busy, meeting with parents and going over the frigging, it's just the way the schedule works. Will you have them come here?
Marie? I know every one in the audience will just thank me so much for coming here tonight. I know it's a timeout during the evening, but I think it's really important to get your faces in front of the school committee, so you can see the people who do all the work behind the scenes. So thank you for coming.
If you want to stay and watch this meeting, I might question your sanity, but you guys can certainly, if you want to head up, get up and leave now, that's totally fine.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda, the calendar, if you haven't been on the, if you haven't been on the district website, if you go to calendars now, if you go to school calendars, every single thing gets populated up there, the schools are gonna have it posted. I noticed that my, I know, I don't populate on my calendar, because my calendar is full of all of my stuff, but all my children's stuff is now out all over the place. Any school-related activities, sports is its own calendar, so you have to subscribe to that differently, but everything that's going on is up there. We had a great meeting Thursday after our last school committee meeting, where we sat down, and one person from each school was there, Mr. Buck was there to help make sure that all the calendars were coordinated, that they all populated up onto the district calendar. If you go to the prsd.org website, on the left, you're only gonna see the central offices, the major things that are happening, but if you click on calendars, and you click on district calendar, you'll see every single event that's going on across the district, or you go to your school's website, you'll see those as well. And then infinite campus, there's more, what, over, three days ago, there was over 1,000 people that are, that are up there, and now are accessing the infinite campus. We have a video that's gonna be coming out soon, taking everybody from the very beginning, how to register, how to get them the username and password, because that's kind of a little bit tricky, into how to navigate through your case, look at their grades, assignments, things like that. I know the teachers are using that now to put in their assignments. It's interesting, because elementary has never had this. And there's another part to it that Mr. Conway's working on, making that standards-based, teaching parents about what the standards-based means on those valuation pieces that they'll see on the campus. Triple E, I think, I believe, I notified all of you, and I sent out that, just because those positive tests on Ash Pond, we went ahead and restricted on our campus, because we can control our campus in the Picey area. So we restricted activities, that they'd be done prior to dusk. So the latest test from Ottawa Westwood, because they are coming back all negative, which is great, cold temperature, you know mosquitoes are dying down, but it's gonna take to the first hard frost to make sure that's addressed. And of course, we just, so most of us saw the West Nile now out there as well, but it's the same precautions. We had, we put out a thing about buses in the morning, the robocall, which I didn't mean to be a robocall, still trying to figure this system figured out though, but just that students who are out early, if they're out at 6:30, 6:45, it's still dark, it's a good idea to cover up with use bug spray. We just wanted to work with the Western Department of Health to make sure that that message out. And I'm now going to turn it over to, the one and only, Mr. Pembroke.
Thank you. The high school guidance office has a jar for donations for Reed's Rebels. It's a charity named after Reed Landry Garant. He graduated from Penn Tucket four years ago, and he died of leukemia, so they're trying to collect money for the Dana Farber charity. The freshman class elections took place last week for student council, the government, and all the sports teams are doing well. Field hockey won tonight, three to nothing against Georgetown. Girls soccer beat Georgetown yesterday, four to one. The boys beat Georgetown, two-nothing, and the football team won against Ipswich on Friday, 41 to 20. That is all.
Thank you. So all the news we've got for you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. On your new business, we have GAP, the discussion?
Sure, I believe tonight we have Frau Hackett is with us to talk about GAP, which is the German-American partnership program. Looks like, do you have a handout?
Yeah, in here, Pierce.
Oh, in here, Pierce, sorry, in here, Pierce, I'm sorry.
Jessica, up in there.
Okay, so they're all here to talk about GAP. GAP is a German-American partnership program, just to give you a quick background. GAP is something that previously had existed at Penn Tucket, certainly existed when I was here, and the legal Ms. Blanchard was here as well. This was something that we had in place. Students would come here during the school year, and in the summertime, while the school was still going on Gd назиум in Germany, some students would elect to go over to Germany. Because it's, it's a, it is a subsidized partnership by both the German government and the US government, the only way that GAP can exist, that GAP program can exist, is that a school has to sponsor it. So this is, it's a different program from any other trip. So if you wanted to go to Spain, there's no such program that exists between the Spanish government and the American government, there's not a GAP program for that. So if a teacher wants to take his students to Spain, that's on their own, we're not having anybody on this, but in order for GAP to exist, you have to have a school relationship with another school in Germany, so it would have to be something the school committee would have to approve. I believe Frau Hackett has a handout, and, do you want me to get you set up on that?
Yeah, that would be great.
Sure.
The curriculum that the world languages department is working under. So GAP, you can see that the task in hand is a partnership between German students and American students. So Dr. B just went over, what is the GAP program? GAP is the German-American partnership program. It is a bilateral exchange program between the German foreign office and the US State Department. It's the largest and most successful program. It was founded in 1972. So far, 360,000 students have taken part in the program, and around 9,000 US students take part in the program each year. Why GAP? So it's a program that's sponsored by the US government. It has a long tradition at Penn Tucket. Many German students still are in contact with their host families and visit them frequently, even after 20, 25, 30 years. It's a rich immersive experience for students to get into the culture and language, and provides opportunities for students to quickly boost their language acquisition, which is very important. How does GAP support Penn Tucket world curriculum? I'm gonna back up one second, and I'm gonna ask Steven Peterson to come and just fill us in on the past GAP trips that he has chaperoned.
Great, hi, thanks for having us. So I think Dr. Bartholomew and Frau Hackett did a good job of kind of giving the overview. I don't have too much to add on the background of that, except I'm one of those 360,000 people, so I did, that was my first abroad experience. When I was a junior at Masconum, I did a study abroad in, with Germany, and it's absolutely, I quickly boosted my German skills. I came back with a, almost, very conversational in the language, so my skills boosted rapidly. It was, at first, really intimidating, but I hung in there, got through it, and I think grew a lot through that experience, so I kept a personal connection to it. I also, I led two, two of the groups, we've had many groups for about, you know, 25 years or so, but I was co-leader on two of those, and I would say that, basically, to give you a flavor of it, the, the way we've done it in the past typically is in the fall, the Germans, and we had Austrian for a while too, but GAP is strictly with Germany, they would stay with us for about three weeks, living with host families, and the teachers would live with usually us, the teachers, so we would also host another teacher, and they would come to school with us, do some traveling, there was a trip to New York City, and then come early summer, we would go to Germany, and they would reciprocate, and we, our students would stay with their partners, and with their host families, and while there, they would attend classes during the school day. So GAP does require, there is a minimum amount of time that students have to be experiencing school in Germany, so they do go to some school and get to actually shadow their students from class to class, as well as engage in presentations. So there is some requirements, academic requirements, that they have to prepare presentations to then share with their, when they're in German classrooms, which is great, because they get kind of, and the Germans do that here too, so you get a cultural, some fairly interesting cultural perspectives. And we do some side trips. The teachers, that was myself on a couple occasions, we would always be present in the schools, we're present on all the side trips. The only time we're not present is when they're with their families, and they're with their host families. That's generally how it worked. Highlights, just want to put out a couple things, I think, one thing I would say is, in addition to the lifelong bonds, which sometimes do develop, I know we have a teacher in the middle school, Ms. Stone, who, she has a lifelong bond, goes back frequently to Germany, from her former GAP partner. And also, though, I just want to say one thing, I think it builds confidence in students, and competence for traveling abroad and for engaging in further experiences. A lot of kids have done it, go on to then do study abroad programs in college, or even beyond, so they, I think it just helps kind of give them that one, that boost to be more likely to do it and experience something like that again in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about how GAP supports the world languages curriculum at Penn Tucket. So Penn Tucket operates under the World Readiness Language Standards for, sorry, World Readiness Standards for Learning Language. So the goal areas are the five Cs, communication, cultures, connections, comparison, and communities. And so the communities, that's, that's the school and global communities and the lifelong learning. So if you would just take a look at the communities portion, the handout that I gave you, it states, part of it states that, part of the curriculum is to participate in multilingual communities, and that can't be taught in the classroom. So in order to fulfill all of our duties toward the curriculum, we really have to look for these opportunities for students to get out and experience multilingual experiences, and do, you know, study abroad, you know, go on trips, and the GAP program is a perfect match for the German curriculum. So we are proposing that we go to Wreningen, Germany. Danielle Stone, a science teacher at the middle school, was actually in Germany, visiting her GAP partner this past summer, and we had done some research, after we got the go-ahead, to research the GAP program again, and we thought some schools, she was able to visit a Gd назиум there, and this is the location, it's in the southwest of Germany, it's about 18 kilometers from Stuttgart, and it's one of Germany's most beautiful cities. Stuttgart is, I think, when it gets pretty nice too, and there's some pictures. Okay, so this is the town, these are actual pictures of the town. The population is around 18,000 people. The downtown is very pretty, it's fairly small, it has shops, hotels, and restaurants. So this is our potential partner school, it's the Gd назиум Wreningen, and Gd назиум means that it's a higher level school than, so there's a three-tier system in Germany, and this is the most academic school, a Gd назиум is the most academic school. So at this particular Gd назиум, there's 600 students, 75 teachers, and we are suggesting that 20 students do the exchange. They have about 20 students who want to do the GAP with us, and we're hoping to get 20 students as well. And this is the headmaster, Gabi Boerschun, and Danielle met with her when she was over there this summer. Couple more photos, pictures of the school. In 2016, the school decided to offer some courses completely in English, and some of these are geography, biology, and art, and history. That's what the classrooms look like.
Looks just like our classroom building, doesn't it?
The new building.
So this particular school has, has experienced doing exchanges with other schools in Italy, so that's a plus for our students, because they have experience, you know, going and staying in other, other host countries. It's a science classroom. Danielle had to throw that in, she's a science teacher. This is a possible itinerary, I know you can't really see it, but I can't really see it.
Well, just over two weeks.
Yeah, meet with families, yeah, school, school day, trip to Stuttgart, sightseeing, go to Heidelberg, which is, these are, you know, some really very nice cities in the area. And this is their website, if anyone would, you know, wants to go on the website. I have shared this with Dr. B, so you can have access to this. So this is our goal, our goal is to participate in the GAP in June of 2020. It worked out, so our students will go to Germany first in June, and then in October, the German students will come to us. The initial paperwork is, must be filed by December 2019, and so we're asking the, that's the, the school board to approve the GAP. So, do you have any questions?
With the influx of refugees in Germany, as a parent, what kinds of assurances and safeguards can you give me, or any of the parents? I, I love the program, but I need some assurances that my child is going to be safe when sending them overseas.
Well, this is a very, it's quite a small city in Germany, and I doubt that there's a big influx of refugees into this area. Of course, the students, if, when students go to possibly Stuttgart, which is a bigger city, or Heidelberg, they will be chaperoned at all times, there will be no instance where they are out of sight of a chaperone.
Is that a 10 to 1 chaperone?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. It actually might be a little bit less than that, because I believe we're gonna try to take three chaperones this time, I believe it's gonna be myself, Herr Peterson, and Mrs. Stone.
I noticed the German students are coming here during Oktoberfest, and not Penn Tucket going to Oktoberfest.
That's a good thing.
Yeah.
One last thing to worry about.
If I could just, just as a...
Go ahead. No, you started first.
Just as, if you remember, this came up previously, and they were asked to go ahead and start the whole application process, because there was a deadline, so now they're at a point where they have to make a decision.
I'm all for it, and I would make a motion that we support the application.
A second.
Is there a pass to the district for any of this?
Motion to start the application process?
Motion to start the application.
Initial paperwork.
So what is, when do we absolutely have to make a decision on moving this by? Does it have to be done tonight? Can it be done in two weeks? Do you have any questions?
Well, we would like to, you know, start moving forward, so, you know, we're asking for a decision.
But could a decision be done in two weeks?
So, something you, so is, I guess, is that for the purpose of just getting feedback and thinking about it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, so that's great, because I also put a link to the BACS.
I, I, so she actually shared this with me.
Okay.
Is that frequently?
Anyway, so that's for the, that's for the GAP program, the BACS. If you click on that link, you can just get the, you know, for, ask questions from the GAP program. I, you know, having lived in Europe for five years myself, I just, it changed my life. I'm not the same person that I was when I, you know, before I traveled abroad, and I really think that, I really think that we need to give students the choice. Students don't have to go on a trip, and, and any student who would go on the trip would be fully supported by their parents. I also wanted to say that before we go on the trip, we would have parent meetings, we would have meetings with students, all of the guidelines would be in place, so there would be absolutely no, you know, no one would be unclear about what the expectations were, the students or the parents.
That's one of my questions. So is it any student that applies can go, or do they have to be in a certain, certain academic standing, a certain, or just anyone who applies generally can go?
I'm gonna defer to Herr Peterson for that one.
In the past, we've always had academic requirements, as well as behavioral. I mean, if there's any students who have demonstrated that they can't be trusted, if that's known entity, that's, that would eliminate them. I mean, within reason, obviously, people can make mistakes, I'm not saying, but you have to look at character a little bit, you have to be able to trust the kids that you're bringing. And I think, yes, there, I don't, I can't tell you right off the top of my head what that standard would be, but I think we'd have to establish something.
You mean the academic standard?
Yeah, I mean, certainly if you're... Yeah, certainly if you're not a, if you're not actively engaged in class and not showing an interest, I mean, that's really the only reason why you'd be doing poorly, I think, then why would you want to go? Wouldn't make sense. And I think the meetings with the parents are crucial. There'd definitely be multiple, probably two, three, or maybe, sitting down, initial one, laying out the guidelines, presenting it for the parents to think about it, and telling them this is how it's going to be. And I know in the past, we've always said, if you're looking for a trip where you're going to just go and have fun and go party and go drinking, this isn't, this isn't the trip for you. Now, do that on your own time. So we make it very clear. Also, I think one thing that has to be established is what are the consequences? What if there's a problem overseas? What do you do? I think we'd be very clear, parents should sign off on a contract agreeing to that. I know neighboring towns, Newburyport has, fortunately, they actually had to send students home their last trip, at least one, maybe more, maybe multiple students who were in reach of that, so, which didn't go over well, from what I understand, but they, the teachers were supported by the administration, and the parents had signed off on it. They weren't happy that their kids were sent back. It was for drinking, but...
So just, and also make it clear, so when a student goes over there, they'll go over all the rules, but because they're coming from, even though it's in the summertime, they're still representative of Puskett students. So when they're over there, parents may want them to have a cultural experience, be able to drink, but they're not, this is because this would be a school-sponsored, not able to do that.
Right, so we say, if you want to do all those things, go with your family. Sure. Right, you know, honestly, that's, and go have fun.
Yeah, and I have been a chaperone for the Washington D.C. trips for the past four years, and, you know, the rules are the rules. And if somebody breaks the rules and the consequences fly in home, then we're going to fly that student home.
And I would think that's something we need to sit down with the administration and really work through clearly, because whatever decision's made is something we have to all be able to live with and actually follow through on. So I would think with superintendent principles that that should be a communal decision.
So you already have a template for a contract?
I most likely do. I have file cabinets with old materials. I would, yeah.
Dana had a question.
I just wanted to say I'm psyched that this is coming back, and I feel that not having it here for this many years has been, you know, a disservice to the students, because I think going abroad is amazing. And I also think that if your parents are on board with it, you know, if the parents know what they're, you know, what they're sending their child to and how they're supposed to behave, then I don't, I don't see a reason why, like, we could not do this, so.
I'm for it, too, and just to back you up on that a little, I think we just passed a policy regarding drinking overseas and how it's not allowed because you represent the school, so I think it, that supports you further.
Right.
As a backup to parents and whatnot.
Can I move to vote? There's still questions. Bree?
I also believe it's a great opportunity, and I also was here when the program stopped, and at the time, the laws for overseas, the Europe, host families, we could, forced to be, take a look at their background or anything else. So I'm guessing those laws are still in existence, so we can't legally, from the United States, have German families offering anything else, or it's still the same [inaudible].
Well, I believe that, since it is a government program, there, I don't think the query is in place, but I believe that, you know, something similar to the query is in place, and I could actually do some research into that and find out what the name of that background check is, because I'm positive that the German government would not send a student to the United States or let their, you know, or let an American student come and stay with the German family without knowing that that student would be safe with the family.
So how, when you get there, you're chaperoning this trip, do you check in with each family? So you know to actually meet each family, and how often are you checking in?
Oh, absolutely. So there's a meet and greet right away with all the families, and then you check in daily. You do daily activities together with these students, and you might not see the families every day, but you do see them at least three or four times during the course of the trip. And also, there would be a mechanism in place to place any student who, you know, was having difficulties or was feeling uncomfortable with another family, or maybe just be removed and, you know, stay with, you know, one of the chaperones is staying or something like that. We would definitely have something in place like that. So if a student said, you know, listen, I'm not comfortable with what's, you know, with my family, we would definitely have a backup plan for that.
And so then the chaperones, the three chaperones stay in the city, right?
Oh, yes.
The whole time?
We stay with, probably faculty members from the school. That's generally how it's done. And we're at the school, we're involved with the parents, we see the students every day, we go with them to all of the field trips, any activity that they do. So we as chaperones from the United States, as well as the faculty chaperones from the German school, will all be together, making sure that, you know, the students are meeting expectations and having a good time.
Yeah, and you know, I think from experiences, typically during the school week, you're meeting with the American students. We used to have an initial meeting every morning, just the Americans, kind of a check-in, how's it going, you know, here's our day looks like. You know, the only time we're not with them is the weekends, it's family time, and that's part of the experience. So, you know, the families want to take them and show them things. They want to take up the table, want to bring you and show you this and that. So that's, we're not with them then, obviously, they're doing, so that's part, that is part of the experience, if you have that time with the families.
Yeah, so my biggest concern is that, you know, exactly what happened in Newburyport, which is you have one of our students who gets put in a situation where they're, you know, the family's doing something that is not following the rules of our school, and there's a lot of possibly pressure on our student.
Right.
And then if they get caught and then flown home, I feel like it's not fair for the student in a situation where it's hard for them to succeed.
And I think that was exactly the point of contention in Newburyport as well, you know, they violated the rules, but they were pressured to do it, but, so anyway, that's why I think that has to be established pretty clearly.
So I would be with the German families, and I would let them know that the students are not allowed to have alcohol, and there are plenty of other things to drink in Germany apart from alcohol. So I really think that it can be made clear, not all people in Germany drink. I mean, there are many, many, many families who don't drink at all. So I really don't think that that would be a problem for German families to just say, no, you can have Fanta instead of a beer. I think, you know, I think they would all agree with that.
Bree?
Just to make sure that the public realizes that the school committee is doing that due diligence. If for some reason, at one percent of the time, something goes awry drastically, law-wise, I believe it's the whole street today, since it's sanctioned, Puskett Regional School District will deeds still be on the hook, unless you're saying, because it's federally sponsored, that somehow the federal government would step in and take Puskett off the hook. I don't.
I think from...
I just want to throw that out, because those were the arguments of yesteryear on why the program was abolished. Nobody can step forward and have any guarantees, absolute...
You're saying if something, if something happened to a student and the parents went after Puskett, sort of?
Oh, absolutely, yes, because it said school sanctioned. Unfortunately, Puskett Regional School System is on the hook, even though it could be a very rare occurrence.
The legal matters, I have to...
Yeah.
I don't have a lot of experiences with this, but I think the clear thing is if there was neglect, the school, you'd have to, they'd have to show that the school district was neglectful. If a student decides to do something wildly inappropriate, that's, that's not the school districts. We sponsored the trip, but we didn't sponsor them doing whatever illegal activity they might decide to go into. But if we were neglectful and gave them that opportunity, different story.
Right, I mean, if a student does something wildly inappropriate on a school trip here or, I don't think, right, I would think it would be a similar...
Students, the families are responsible to pay for this, so what does it cost? And what about families that can't afford it and who's...
It's, I haven't, it's been probably at least eight years, maybe, or so, since my last, so the sure costs have changed. It was always roughly around three thousand dollars, which is relatively cheap when you look at travel.
Yes, it is very inexpensive exchange program, and one of those reasons is because the students stayed with families, so you have no accommodation costs. And we were actually talking about, Danielle Stone and I were talking about doing fundraising to, you know, support some students who might not be able to afford it otherwise. So we had some ideas on fundraisers that we could do.
And from looking at their website, they also have some grants and financial support available.
Yes, they do, yeah. They're generally very generous.
Can I move?
I used to go to the business community and just shared with them, I have X number of kids that cannot make this trip, they would love to go, but can't afford it. What can you do for me? Have you had any experience or success in going to the business community?
That's interesting, and actually, I think that Ms. Azanara could maybe help me with that a bit. You're connected with the business community, right?
Actually, not so much. Basically, my son is in Germany, that's why I'm here, I'm making support of travel and to experience. The company I work for in April basically does, you know, it's a chemical company, but when it comes to asking people or the business community for donations on top of grants, that's something I would be happy to help with as a parent, and also hosting a student as a parent. I had, when I was back in high school, we had a similar program in Southern California, and lucky them, they all got to go to Disneyland with us for a trip, which was really, really fun, but likewise, we had to make, you know, we had to make sure that there weren't inappropriate alcohol consumption on our side, and it was, it was an interesting, interesting trip, but I'm fully in support, just my opinion with the book.
Yeah, so we are reaching out to everyone, every contact we have, and, you know, trying to garner support in that way.
Any other questions?
I just, I shared that present, I just shared that presentation with everyone, so you should have it. But Mr. Hodges, you might have a problem because yours comes back, and we'll deal with that later.
Can I move to make a vote?
Second?
Second.
We already did the motion.
So we're just voting on starting the application process, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Okay, thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate the time.
Thank you, dear.
So the next item on the agenda is what goes into the district budget.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair. So this is just, I wanted this year to make sure we go through step-by-step on the budget process, so everyone has kind of a foundational understanding. So this was put together by the Partnership for Regional Schools, and I think it's a very good, there's two quick videos that I'm going to share with you, and Greg has seen these as well, because I would never put something in front of you without making sure he saw that, it's like, and he didn't know who was put on by, but it was, oh, absolutely, that's exactly how things were for us. So I think it's a good, quick video, just to give an understanding of the budget.
In most towns across Massachusetts, the majority of local taxpayer dollars goes to fund education. So where does that money go specifically? Let's find out. The money spent by school districts is commonly referred to as the budget. There are literally thousands of items on which a school district has to sign. While every school district is different, the vast majority of the budget pays salaries and benefits to employees, typically seventy to eighty percent. This includes salaries, health insurance, pensions, and other benefits to the teachers, staff, and administration that work in the schools. It's worth highlighting that school districts are not immune to spiraling health insurance costs. They pay health insurance post-retirement for many employees as well, making an increasing share of the budget. A significant cost that often happens behind the scenes is actually payments to other schools. Some students may choose to attend public schools outside of their home district, or may require certain services only offered by a specialized school. In these cases, the district pays either a portion or full tuition to these other schools. While it can vary wildly, statewide, these costs make up an average of eleven percent of district budget. Another major expense is operations and maintenance, averaging nine percent of statewide budgets. Individual schools now educate hundreds, if not thousands, of children, which is a big change from the days of a one-room schoolhouse. With larger buildings comes more complicated systems, more places where the roof might leak, and more spaces to keep them cool. Physical buildings need to be maintained and repaired, and things like utilities, snow removal, and increased safety tools really add up. Another major cost that you might not think about is transportation. Children have to get to from school. Particularly for regional school districts, where kids typically travel farther distances across multiple towns to get to school, busing can eat up an average of four percent of the total budget. Next up is technology. Many schools now use laptops and tablets for instruction.
We're a little bit behind.
But even if you believe kids don't need any of that to learn, standardized testing mechanisms is conducted electronically, which requires computers and Wi-Fi in every school. And of course, all of these items are on top of basic supplies like pencils, paper, desks, and books. As you can see, operating a school district is a complicated task. We ask a lot about schools, and seemingly small costs add up fast. Remember, schools have diverse needs and budgets, and the numbers used here are averages. All public school budgets are available for anyone to use. You can typically find them on your district's website or by contacting the superintendent's office. This video is part of a series called Education Funding Explained, created by Support Massachusetts Regional Schools. If you'd like more detail on this topic, visit our website or follow us on Twitter.
So just something to keep in mind, I don't know how many of you would have known, or you want to be about retirees, so we pay for all retirees, and that's coming out, all those health expenses go out. So they actually have a voting, so when the health budget comes up, or we're looking at possible GIC versus PPO, they get a vote on whether or not they want to go with the GIC or not. So it's a, the PAT has the majority vote by a long shot, but they have a, they have a pretty big voice in there. And of course, there, they talk about special education tuition. I think we all know, because we stopped school choice, that influx of five thousand dollars of students no longer comes to us, except for the students we have in grade seven to twelve. So this year, we dropped forty-three thousand dollars in our Chapter Seventy money because we have students who graduated last year, we're receiving money for, we're not getting that money anymore. So that's, we start to see those decreases. And special education, they did a good job putting into tuition, but it doesn't calculate into all the costs that actually happen still within the district. Those numbers are pretty close, pretty close to a moment ago. And as soon as you take into account salaries, the tuition, you are, the transportation, you chewed up over ninety percent of the budget, there's not much left for you. So here's just, this one's one minute.
Like any entity, Massachusetts Regional Like any entity, Massachusetts regional school districts have a variety of revenue sources to pay for their operating costs. Some of the biggest are state aid, local assessments, grants, and revolving funds. State aid comes in a variety of forms, including general state education funding, known as NARUCER.
Okay, state aid. We received $43,000 less from the state this year than we did last year, even though we have the same number of students. Also state aid, we were held harmless, that means we got the absolute minimum, which is $30 per student. Percentage-wise, Tuckett received the smallest, 0.3 percent increase from last year compared to all other North Shore school districts. We had the smallest increase.
Does the state rationalize that?
Sure, we can, we can pay for it.
Yeah, you're rich.
But, I mean, if you compare to like Masco?
So Masco has a higher percentage on there, so we were 0.3, I think Masco was 0.7.
It's hard to do Masco because Masco is a split school system.
You have Triton, right, you have Triton that's separate, which is a high school.
They don't call it Masco, it's K to six, it's a seven to 12.
Triton, Triton is the K to six.
Triton to six.
And then Masco is 12. So that percentage, even though they got, they're held harmless, $30 per student.
It's hard to Masco.
So all, most of all of our communities with the annual new report got $30 per pupil, which is for us, that was a small, such a small percentage.
It doesn't seem like they care very much about regionalized schools, because a regionalized school seems to be first in line to take it on the chin.
There was a representative, I cannot remember her name, there was a small town, 44,000 out in the western part of the state, and she had made the comment, said, "Every single year, this budget comes up, the hold harmless districts, she believes should not be receiving any increase, and should be focused just on the city schools," which is essentially what the Promise Act is aiming to do anyway. The problem with that, just to keep that in mind, is our costs go up every single year, so if we didn't get the $30, our towns are gonna be in really big trouble. And she was furious, of course, she's also representing a place that was not held harmless, that would get a lot of that money that got taken away from us. And people just seem to, and it's not just North Shore, it's North Shore, South Shore, in the western part of the state, it's 495 corridor head west, and we are all, we are basically the three targets that are getting hurt. And we're not all wealthy communities either.
Seventy, partial reimbursements for special education, known as circuit breaker, and regional school transportation.
Circuit breaker has not been fully funded for the last seven, eight, seven years, I think, never, never, sorry, not at 100 percent. It's supposed to, it's supposed to be, we're supposed to get 75 percent.
75 percent's their target.
And they've never hit it, because they have that line.
Subject to appropriation.
Subject to appropriation, so if they have the funds, they'll give it to you. Regional transportation has not been fully funded, although Senator Tarr has pushed it through, and it looks like we have more regional transportation funds issued than we did last year, which is wonderful. But circuit breaker hurts us really, really, really bad. When we talk about special education costs, they're 30 percent of our operating budget. So when you're looking at $12 million of your budget, and of that $12 million, if we had some money, we have to front off, front off the cost. So if we had just, if it's 68 percent instead of 75, that 7 percent is a huge chunk of change. So the Commonwealth has horrifically failed at addressing this in special education transportation.
Local assessments are the money paid directly to the district by members of cities and towns. Grants can come from federal, state, or private sources, and are generally provided for very specific reasons. Finally, revolving funds are used to accept receipts in situations where the funding will be immediately spent back into a designated program. Examples include sporting event or performing arts ticket sales, student payments for school meals, facility rental fees, and tuitions for early childhood education. All public school budgets are available for anyone to view. You can typically find them on your district's website.
Okay, so, so just as, that list, Chapter 70, local grants, and then your revolving funds should have been from the biggest to the smallest, but those first two are flip-flopping. And that is, for us, very problematic. But again, this is just, I'm gonna try to do one of these a month, we're not gonna start heading up the budget until sometime in January, but just this, trying to get an understanding, so when you're out there talking to people, you understand, okay, here's the four pieces. Our revolving funds, we're not gonna use that to fund teachers, that's just, that's not going to happen, you don't generate that kind of income. But from the state piece, although Mr. Went, who's here, he spoke in communication just about the teachers, that the teachers need to get out, they need to recognize this as a problem, and help work with the North Shore superintendents. So we all just need to rally around, this has to stop, this cycle has to stop, and special education has to be addressed at the state level.
I've asked this question before, do you see any value of hiring someone who would be a grant writer for all three towns?
I have a meeting tomorrow morning, I've spoken with Mr. LeBrack about this very recently, and yes is the answer to that question. My question is, what we're looking at is possibly just talking to someone who is wanting to do something like that, we contract them, which means we basically-
Pay one commission.
What's that?
Pay one commission.
Yep, that's right, we pay him a dollar, because we've contracted, it's tuition based on a sliding scale, if you get X to X, we'll give you this percentage, if you get X to X, we'll give you this percentage. But our, what we need to do is we need to identify what are the areas where we need funds targeted, because when you go to write grants, it's going to want to be for a specific purpose. And we will have to, if we receive a grant, we're gonna have to deal with all the strings that get attached. And I am not a fan of strings, and I'm also understanding that some people aren't just not gonna give you money for no reason. But yes, we actually, this person doesn't even know this, but they're coming in tomorrow, let's get, this won't air until, person's coming in tomorrow morning, and that's gonna be, rumor mill has it, and I'm curious to see if that's true. If it is, it'd be very good for us.
I mean, with the copy guy.
Not a copy. Five seconds.
Are there any other questions? You also, Dr. B?
Yeah.
The next item on the agenda was school committee goals. So at the last meeting, we discussed updating our goals, and requested members to please send us their thoughts and ideas, and received an email from Ray, Joanna, and Emily. So they were all made part of the package, so everybody should have had an opportunity to record them. And Emily also included a diagram.
It's just referenced in one of my goals.
On the norms of collaboration. I'm not really sure where to start this, but we need to go along updated goals. Is there somebody on the table? People that set something in, do people want to talk about it in the center?
Yeah, so my rationale was kind of to start to take place in the communication goal, because it's my feeling that Dr. B and the school district does such a great job of communicating, that if we're sending out additional communications, I think it's just over yet. I think people are saturated with information, so I'm not so sure, like us doing Facebook posts or tweets or whatever is really effective. So what I do feel like is, if you are someone who's interested in the school committee, there's not a great way to get more information about the school committee. Kids coming to a meeting is, I think, a fairly intimidating process, and there's not a way to really interact. So what I was thinking was that would be, for communication, maybe we could just make it a point to try to be at a few things a year. You know, back-to-school night, I think would be a good place, where we just have a table set up, there'd just be one or two of us sitting there, just answer questions for people who might be interested in the position of the school committee. So that was the rationale behind what I wrote.
Emily? I think that sounds fantastic.
Yeah, I think that sounds good, too. Is there anyone to?
No, so, I mean, you know, like, I don't know if we're going to do what we did last time, we just take the goals and throw them back to a committee, like a smaller goals subcommittee, to write something and then propose it. I intentionally kind of left it open-ended, which is, if we're having a smart goal, we have to specifically state what we're doing. So, and I think that's probably something that's better handled in a subcommittee setting. But that's, and then the other thing that I put in there, so I actually got a call on, that somebody had called me who was interested in the school committee position, they said, you know, are you guys paid? Because the perception actually is that we are, because many districts do pay their school committee members. I'm pretty sure, yeah, it's typically a stipended position.
Woody, and it's not.
What I don't want to be doing is excluding people from the position of school committee, because you can't afford to volunteer the amount of time that it requires to be on a school committee. So that, and it does elevate the prestige of the position a little bit if you stipend it. So, one thought is to start to bring back slowly a stipend, like, whether you just make it $500 a year, it's just some kind of recognition. And I could do a little bit of a survey to find out what the other districts are paying, I'm pretty sure Newbury Court is still a stipended position. I know my sister, who was serving on a school committee locally, hers is stipended, so I can look around and find out.
Questions?
Go ahead, Chris, what's ahead of me?
I'm wondering if there's anything in original agreement that might speak to that, whether allowing it or not allowing it, or Tuckett ever doing it, I don't recall.
There was a stipended, it was a stipended position for many years, and it was probably, um-
I wanna say 10 years ago.
At least 10 or 12 years ago, it was $1,200, paid us, you know, half and half throughout the year. And at one point, the budget was struggling, and, you know, there was some shortfall, so at one of the school committee meetings, one of the members both motioned to have the stipends go away, to put that money back to the school. That's what happened.
I'm double-checking, I don't know if anything's, sorry, with the regional.
It's not the regional. I don't have to get and see it, but Dick, and then Ray?
I also went down another path with a question, I was wondering if it would be to our advantage at the end of each quarter, for us to, say at the end of the first quarter that week, be at the various schools that we represent. In my case, it would be Bagnow Middle School, High School. And put myself in a position where parents would have an opportunity to come to me with questions, concerns, things that are really going well. I'm thinking that that could also be part of this communication tool, that would enhance more communication. Just a thought.
Okay.
I think what's on the agenda, school committee calls, we're probably not looking right now for individual things, that's for a later time for discussion. I think what we need to do now, to decide whether we want to have a subcommittee with a chairperson of that subcommittee, to take a look at what do you want this year for establishing new goals, and then specifics will come thereafter. So what we have right here, I believe, what we need probably is a motion for somebody to actually volunteer to chair it, and have a subcommittee put together.
Chris?
Well, I somewhat disagree with you, because I think that at a minimum, what we should do before we turn it over to a subcommittee is decide on a couple points. Communication, whatever format that might be, could be one, and then the subcommittee. So I think we do have to come up with a few big items to then task a smaller committee to move along with, not get down to that integrative now, but I still think we need to do at that level.
Okay.
To Joanna or Dick's point, I think we did say that we were gonna try to reach out to the community last year, and make ourselves, you know, like, whether those Newbury reps went to, you know, the Apple Harvest Race and had a table, or, you know, a school event at the middle school, the high school, wherever, but it just never got done. So I don't know if that becomes the role of the communication committee, like, here's your assignments, like, what's your availability, can you be here on this day, can you be here on that day?
Well, I beg to, that's important, too, and of my own experience, that I have gone to some of these things, but nobody knows that I'm there.
Right, you have to advertise that you're there.
You know, so it needs to be advertised.
But I think that's key, too, because, like we've said in the past, like, Dick talks about people showing up at his house or his driveway and telling, but if someone doesn't have a personal relationship with us, or doesn't see our kid on the same sports team, or doesn't have that accessibility, everyone should have that accessibility to us, not just the people we see through what our, you know, our role in the district is.
Yes, just our current goal, you know, talks a lot about, it does specifically say meet and greet, so that's great, but then it's talking also about the Facebook, the Twitter, posting the town hall, emailing, we casted a very broad statement for us, and I think maybe that's part of the problem, is like, it was so broad, that if we could become a little more specific with exactly what we think we could do, that would probably facilitate what you're saying.
Well, it seems like the intent of your, the way you wrote it, was to inform people about, not just like all the issues, which, as you mentioned, the administration has it covered, but to like, answer people's questions about participating, potentially becoming a member, those kinds of things, is even more narrow scope, which I think makes it seem more manageable.
Okay, other than communication, is there anything else, nobody's on topics?
Just a comment, so, am I correct in thinking that we might be moving into a recruiting mode in terms of making ourselves available? Because I have to tell you, I'm more interested in dealing with parents and what they love about this place, and where we need to grow, that's my two questions.
Okay, Joanna?
So, of course, part of the reason how my goal is, as you know, I did not run for school. You know, I did not have my name on the ballot.
I regret.
It did appear on the ballot, though, because you're here.
No, I was only as a write-in, though. My name wasn't even on the ballot. So like, out of the entire town of Merrimack, not one person ran for the position. I don't think they knew it was out there. I kept looking in the newspaper to see if they had said the school committee position is open. I never saw it, the Daily News may view this and correct me and find that posting, but I was actively looking for it, and I didn't see it. So, you know, which was a little disappointing, that the position doesn't even hold that level of prestige, that it wouldn't even be covered in the newspaper. So that's kind of part of my reason behind it is-
I get it.
Nobody's running for these positions, it's kind of, they're kind of being cast along the road now.
I think $5,000 sounds better than $1,200, though.
So Triton does get a stipend first, or whatever that is, in terms of-
The Triton thing is kind of a catch-22, because it's not the stipend that can ever ever concern you, it's what would come with it. So a lot of, what a lot of the towns did, because the $1,500, the stipend we're getting, whatever, was also tied to, now you get health insurance, and suddenly that $1,500 becomes 10 grand, and you've got a lot of people running because they wanted the health insurance part of it. So the backside of it is, what you do is you say that these are not full-time positions, these are part-time, you have to make like a separate vote, and they're not held for the health insurance, that's what a lot of towns did, to select them, because, like I said, they're costing them a fortune. It's not the $1,500, or 2 grand, or $2,500, it's what can come with it. So you do it, kind of set it up in a way that you can be somewhat controlled, it's a fixed number, so that's all it asks.
Okay.
I agree with what Joanna's saying about letting acquisitions be known and that, but I think to Dick's point, people are gonna approach us with concerns and questions like they do now, so we just need to be prepared for that, too.
Yep.
I think both of you, I mean, both of your points are valid, that that's what people are gonna approach us on.
Okay, so we get the communication kind of narrowed down to what we want to go with that. Emily, you had brought up some things that you wanted to see on here, of course.
Marie also did, too, so they have kind of similarity.
Well, Marie also did, too, so they have kind of similarity.
So, I didn't really look back at this year's goals, this past year's goals, as much, because I sort of thought about where we might do some work going forward. So, obviously, I think that we've been doing really important work on policy. I am so grateful for all of the work that everyone has done putting in. So I think that that should be, obviously, we need to continue that. I don't know if we want to formalize that in a goal or not, but that was one of the things that I had put. I, again, it's sort of obvious, but our budget is a big job for us, and I think that we need to continue to develop a budget that doesn't require an override, i.e. within our means, and continues to commit to the small class sizes and the curriculum consistency and professional development for the educators that we have been talking about and is now happening, although I know there are some concerns about some of the class sizes. And the first thing, I think, is, for me, is to do some work around, not just, like, last year, we kind of got in place our protocols, if you will, but I still think that there's some work to do as a team in terms of the how we communicate. And that's why, so I put the seven norms as something that I view successfully in a team where people are coming from very diverse viewpoints and not always on the same page about things, that has really helped us as a team interact and like keep, I don't know, keep our eye on the prize, in that we're all here for the kids of this district, and to really be thinking about, and this sort of Lisa, I think, spoke to this a little bit at the beginning of our meeting, but that like when we address, we address the committee as a whole, and that this isn't about something that somebody particularly said. So what I would like to see, and again, I don't know if this is like a goal for this type of meeting since format, or more like we've done in the past, a workshop, or retreat type of thing, but to look at something like these norms and reflect as a group on where, both personally and as a group, on where we struggle with these, and how we might do better with that. And if you would like more information of that, I can give it to you.
Emily, you want to talk about your piece?
I'll just jump off of that a little bit, because mine are very similar to Emily's. I completely agree with her point on developing a budget within our means. Small class sizes is still an issue within the district. It's coming up amongst parents. Curriculum consistency, I mean, obviously, new administration means new changes, but it's been years since we've had curriculum consistency, and that's taxing on teachers and students, and parents trying to keep up with their students' work. So those are conversations that at least come up with, you know, come to my attention quite a bit. I think the professional development has been, I mean, I can't speak for the teachers, but it seems like there's been a huge improvement in that area. As far as the school committee goals, I can only say that it kind of ties into policy a little bit, in that we're working on a small section now that has to do with instruction and curriculum, but then the next one that we do tackle is policy B, if anyone wants to look that over. That is all school committee, general rules and conduct, and how we should be talking to each other and respecting each other, and just a good guide for communication, and what's expected to us as school committee members, from our constituents, from the district, what the kids of this district should expect from us, and how we can best go about obtaining that. So I would say those would be my big goals for the school committee.
So, what I'm hearing, Dina? I will head up the subcommittee. Thank you.
All in favor?
Okay, is there anybody that would like to serve this subcommittee?
Depending on when you meet, I'd be happy to join you.
I will be amenable at any time.
A lot of people who aren't on other subcommittees are pretty...
Is there anybody that is on that subcommittee?
Not, well, an active one, so free, doesn't follow the policy, so I don't think she's...
Yeah, and she came to our other...
So I can do it, but I can't meet until November on it. That's my only thing, like, I can't start until then.
Can it just be two people?
No, it would be fine, I just, like, I'm happy to do it, but that's my time restriction.
You can come in and put the frosting on the cake.
Yeah, you can edit, you're very good at that. Emily?
Would you be, and I'm not trying to pressure you truly, if we had some thoughts, could we email them to you to bounce them off of you? Like, is your parameter around, like, you just don't have any more mental space, or you don't have time to actually meet?
No, I'm just like finishing off a course in this master's program.
I am not, I am really and truly, I am not trying to pressure you.
Yeah, so that's all, so it's just finding time to meet is the challenge until the end of October. November would be free.
I like the seven norms of collaboration. I think we could do something possibly in a workshop on that, but I think our goals, at least my thinking, is I want every one of our goals to be student-directed. I want our goals, how we operate doesn't necessarily mean how the school system is growing and getting better. So all I'm suggesting is if we change the focus so that every one of these goals, and I'm looking at developing the budget, is going to have impact particularly on class size, communication methods, updating the policies, all of those are student-directed. And so that's where my focus is. I don't know if anyone else has a focus in that direction, but any goals that I'm going to vote in favor of will have to be, have some kind of impact on students.
So we need to vote on this? It was on the agenda for brutal?
Are we just approving the subcommittee?
Yeah, I'm gonna, gonna have a motion to...
Chair Medina.
Yeah, to have the subcommittee.
Chairwoman.
Chairwoman.
So I make a motion to create a subcommittee toward my school committee goals?
Second.
On favor? Okay, out of state field trip.
Sure, thank you very much, Bob Chair, and I think, correct, you might have to chime in on this, but I'll give you just back history. So we know one of our students is going to Nationals, and it's in Orlando, Florida, and the teacher would like to go down there as well. The organization, which is, it's in your notes, NAMT, yeah, NAMT, thank you. So, that's National Association of Music Education, so the teacher would like to go down there, and NAMT is encouraging the teacher to go with the student. It's interesting, separate topic altogether, we're going to have to address later, but we have, I had to reimburse adults in the past, for whatever reason, my number one priority is students first, always, and for some reason, we never address the student part of that, which is odd to me. But that's a separate conversation. The question that now, because it's our state trip, and Mr. Schumacher is looking to see if the school committee is willing to pay the cost. Seager was the last person to cover the cost for, it was the convention convention, this Michigan, Minnesota, and that was $1,085, the total cost of this trip. You can see it, $1,533.77, and that's without food.
Is that the teacher and the student, or just the teacher?
That is just the teacher. So, whatever you would like to approve, I would, just, I think there's a lot of benefits here, I think there's a lot of precedence here, depending on which way you decide to go.
Like Dr. B just said, we did this in the spring, so I'm just concerned, do we have a budget for this when this comes up? Do we have certain monies set aside? I mean, is it going to come to a point that we say, yes, 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 oh, sorry, you came too late, and we can't do it for you? Like, is there, I mean, we approve it, but are we approving it from a particular budget that's stipended off of, the sort of thing?
There is no budget line for this. Obviously, transfers can be made to certain budget lines from ones that evidently exceeded the cost we thought they would recover it, because it's the last one. So, again, so you're right, if it happens once, it's doable, happens two, three times, it's still probably doable. It doesn't happen a lot, it's a different ballgame. It's definitely about it more that way.
Chris?
I'm all for this, but I do think that we need to have some parameters, because in my mind, I can think of like a number of different occasions that, you know, basketball team wins the state championship, goes down to Boston. I don't know if that comes out of the sports budget, if that comes out of the booster's fund, like, I think there needs to be a policy, maybe, and I don't know, maybe there is already one, or there isn't, and I'm not saying that, like, try to legally, like, you know, I, because of, you know, I think of, there's a lot of kids doing amazing things.
Where does the line get drawn?
So I think this is something that we probably have a conversation about, I don't know if it ends up as a policy, but in the PAT and agreement, so if you're an extracurricular or some example, we know we send students every single sort of track of field, we go down to UNC, M C A T, Greensboro, the additional amount that a coach receives for that is And the coach for that particular sport has never gone down because it's just too costly. And we have students that will go for extracurricular activities, sometimes curricular things, that might be invited to Nationals a lot, and again, I'm just making this point, since I've been here, we've never talked about paying for the students to go. We're fortunate here, where the parents have had the resources to pay for the students to go. So what happens when we have five students or a basketball team, or whatever, that's invited, all those student athletes in the spring? Are we going to cover those costs as well? That's a big question, to Greg's point, that now we're talking about all of those expenses, the registration, the hotel accommodation, the airfare for that child. Fortunately, I'm coming out of a place where this was a practice that ended up getting cursed, because so many kids were participating. I'll tell you, the one that's on the horizon in my school, Betty Ware's DECA. I think that DECA, Miss Estes, does a great job with DECA, DECA could all become a big thing, they have wonderful regional, state, and then national competitions. And our kids did really well, and they were all freshmen last year. So it's just a matter of time before they have teams that get invited to go to Nationals. Those places are in California, Tennessee, they're not close by. They might be as long.
Does anyone remember this?
I agree with Chris, I think we're all future times, we certainly should come up with something that's fair and equitable for, whether you're a tiddlywinks player, or no matter what you're involved in, and you're representing our communities. I think Chris has an idea of, well, let's come up with something, let's have it down so everybody has a shot, that's fair and equitable, whether it's 100% or whatever you come up with, just to make it fair for everybody involved, whether it's athletics, or band, or whatever.
So in addition to that, I think, you know, being on a few different foundations, a lot of times, teachers or staff members can go to the organizations to partner to get some of the funding, so in this case, maybe the music boosters, or the Arch Foundation, or the PTOs for like the STEAM program. So I'm just thinking, we need something more formalized, and it needs to be equitable, and it certainly needs to go along with the teachers' contracts, so that, you know, there's not disparity there. So I don't, I don't know, do we say, yeah, this is the one-time thing, and then we make the policy, or like, I'm torn right now.
Well, I get that you're up against it with this one, this kind of street, like that, but if you do make a motion, could you at least have the person kind of run this through the business office, only because you don't approve a cost? I just hop on my phone, and the $500 airfare is the most expensive one, if I plug in the H and X D, that's a nonstop, that's the most expensive. cheapest one is $200. So I mean, I'm not sure, if you could just give someone a blank check to go on a trip, sort of thing, I should sit down with them and say, this will be...
Through the warrant process.
Yeah, and kind of arrange it a little bit.
Well, I think, I definitely think Chris is right, and we do have to have stuff going, you know, parameters put in place, but I also think we should allow him to go, just because it's only a month away. I don't know how lo, how much, you know, what he could get from the music boosters, or how fast, or I don't know. Okay, so does somebody...
Joanna, just one question, it's more for Justin. So Justin, do we have somebody who's in control of travel? If you're at a large company, you have a travel office, kind of makes arrangements. So, it's just Greg.
The person who goes nowhere, said, "Myrtle Beach or me?" I'm your expert in travel.
We do not have a travel agent, we don't have anybody who does those combinations, everything runs through Greg, and I think that's all.
But I mean, if I sat down with the person, and said, when you're going here, let's look in the computer and do it, like I said, I just did it on my phone, I could probably do this trip for about half of us. So I mean, I think, you know, the person shouldn't stay, be someplace he's uncomfortable, but it doesn't always have to be the best of the best, either.
I think this is pretty important, because it's a national opportunity, and I would never diminish what the girls did as a state champion, but they weren't national champions. And if we had to pay for the girls to go into Boston, and we probably did, I would have voted in favor of that in a heartbeat, but I think we ought to let Greg do his magic with the travel, and I move that we get, give the money, provide the money for the coach to go with the, with the 10th grader.
Should we move on that motion? Still a couple more questions?
Okay.
Emily, Marie?
Can the student go? I mean, I'd like to see him go, too, but in light of everything, can he go without?
It's, it's in the note, it says, students are strongly encouraged to have their director or school chaperone accompany them to this event. Okay, so, is the motion? Is there a second? Second.
What's the motion?
What is the motion? So, are we looking to...
It says, buy money for the teacher to attend with the student, but it doesn't say the amount.
With Greg's magic.
Well, I think with central office approval, maybe, does that work?
A lot of cost approval?
Yeah, central cost.
Through the district's warrant process.
Oh, yeah, would he buy these things, looks like they were the credit card for the district?
But you wanted the motion to say that, that it has to go through the warrant process?
Yeah, I don't want someone just booking their own flight and saying, here's how much I spent, but you owe me this much money.
Marie, can you read the motion?
Provide money for the student to attend, for the teacher to attend with the student with the central office cost approval.
Through the district's warrant process.
Through the district warrant process. So take that out, or add that, add it?
Add it.
Through the district warrant process, okay? On favor? Oppose? Obstain? Okay. The next item on the agenda, because you mentioned the agenda, is going to be those emails that you sent out regarding fine arts and physical ed programs at the elementary school. So I'm going to read the email that you sent. Good morning, Lisa, due to unobscene medical circumstance, I am unable to address the following concerns to the committee and administration. I would ask that you present it to, present it in the form of a memo instead. These concerns dealing with the fine arts, physical education programs in the district's elementary schools. I would like to make clear at the outset that these concerns are not intended to be considered as a criticism of administration, rather a reflection of community concerns expressed by residents and parents of the three towns since the start of the school year. Administration need not be concerned with responding this evening, but in a timely manner, especially since concerns in one town need not necessarily exist in one of the other elementary schools. Among the concerns in the elementary schools that have been reported are that some students in the district will not have the opportunities to have an art or music class this year, that some specialists do not have the benefit of passing time between morning and or afternoon classes, that some specialists in at least one of the elementary schools have had their lunch period shortened. Passing time for educators is usually considered essential... Passing time for educators is usually considered essentially not only to the PEA, but to also to attend to personal needs as well. We justly celebrate the accomplishments of our fine arts program at the secondary schools. The roots of that success are to be found at the elementary level where every student has access. So we'd like to talk about this?
Yeah, sure. So it sounds like what he's asking for is we can review what's happening at the elementary school with the specialists. We've certainly done that numerous times, but I think it's, we bring it out here so everyone has a clear understanding. As much as, so, see, Mr. Wentle, he and I have had this discussion as well, he's had a point with Conway. So everyone here has a masterful understanding of what it is that's taking place. The idea of a student not having chorus may be true, but students all have, elementary students, sorry. To my knowledge, every student has PE and music. It might be music, it might be chorus, it might be band, one of those options. But I think, Mr. Conway and I have to come back to that at the next meeting with all the details, just to make sure everyone is brought to the room to play. Yeah, with that, and I know we've been very upfront with the specialists that if something's not working, we're doing this for the first time, we'll make the adjustments.
Deanna, Emily? I just wanted to say that I've also heard a few rumblings about art, no art for kids.
That's not, not true.
Okay, but I was pretty sure that was the answer. People are talking, so.
So that got addressed really well, I thought, at the Bagnall open house, because there are students at Bagnall who were not getting art class. They, my child happened to be one of them, they had, due to the instrumental music program, they had to make some changes considering, like, an ad drop period, and they had adjusted the schedule. So I think that they said everyone, except for, like, 15 kids in that four to six, were able, they were able to fix their, the art portion of their schedule. But they had also worked really hard with the STEAM teacher to put some more of the fine art into the STEAM program, because every student in those grades was getting STEAM. So I thought that, that Mrs. Poutieri and Mr. Day did a fantastic job of addressing that, because there were a lot of concerns.
So first day of school, second, third day of school, that came up, and Ms. Poutieri talked to Mr. Conway, and Mr. Conway's out, fourth day, Ms. Poutieri, Mr. Day, corrects.
So a lot of switches at Bagnall happened as of this week, because they let the kids know on Friday the changes, and then they.
It's a great example, I hope we see that there's a problem, and make that, make the adjustments.
Yeah, Emily had mentioned it tonight in terms of class size, and I've had some contact with staff and parents with some issues about class size. And I'm wondering if Dr. Vee could provide us with class size at each of the schools.
So, in what format? We're happy to do that, in what format would you? So, would you want to know that, so Paige, for example, at the third grade has this many classes?
Yes, yes, all the way to 12.
Okay.
We're gonna have that, the October 1st data will run, that'll be our official enrollment, that we base the budget numbers off, that happens October 1st.
I can wait.
Okay, I would just, I would just say, so we don't think we have to be careful.
We get that, we get that from our data processor, Miss Fong?
I'd just like to go over the numbers.
Absolutely, I'm happy to do that.
That'll improve.
One of the things that I always get, one of your, I was weary of, you'll see people who say you have an 11 to 1 student-to-teacher ratio. True, but that's not what really is in the classroom. Similarly, when you have 24 kids in a class, in elementary, that's not really what it is in the classroom either. So we'll try to go, we'll go through all those numbers.
Good. Thank you.
I think in addition to that, so you have your static class sizes, but I don't know, not having elementary kids anymore at this point, when the kids leave their classroom and go to the specialists, are they, like, merged so that some classes might have a larger number, like, of the specialists? Or is it pretty?
Which specialist, you mean PE or?
Yeah, PE, then art, music.
So, so my understanding of the schedule right now is if you're in my class, my class has art at this time, my class has PE. But there are some times, there are some, or is it a chorus, band, those might, those may merge. That's why Mr. Conway would be the.
And I would be interested, because I've heard some things at high school, that there's some small class sizes, but then there's some larger. So even the parameters of, you know, I don't need to know every single class period, but kind of the upper end, do we have a class of 30 kids somewhere in the high school?
31.
31? And, and why we're at that?
Oh, I can't answer that question right now. You want to know why? Because the scheduling process was not very effective.
Because I have daughters who have, like, 10 in their class, in a few subjects, and, you know, I appreciate that, but I know therefore, on the other end, there has to be some large, you know, and how do we as a district approach that?
Yes.
I'm wondering if things like this happen, I remember when I was an administrator, it took me all summer to get it right. You had kids that didn't get along, that needed to be in different classes. You had balances, maybe no more than seven special ed kids in inclusion. I get the impression that, on the secondary level, that we throw a bunch of names in there, and we have a program, we hit a button, and this one's got 31, this one's got nine, this one's got 20. That's my impression. I'm hoping I'm wrong, but I don't think I am.
So, so I will tell you one of the models that we're using this upcoming year is, there is, so it's funny, it's only because with Infinite Campus, it will have the absolute ability for students to go and register for courses. You have a course tally, how many students are interested in the course. Administration can look at that and say, here's the number of sections we're recommending. They can get that down to the department chairs, the department chairs can say, yep, we like that, or we can do, we need more sections, whatever they want to think. That's a little negotiation piece, and then once that section is set of the number, then you run a simulation, and through the simulation, you get a schedule where it's balanced out. And you prioritize seniors getting electives first, because they need to graduate, then juniors, then sophomores, then freshmen. Because of the way we've been working and operating here, whether it was the Innovation Academies, or just the whole scheduling process, you had, but then my, it was first day of school, it was very busy in the counseling office, so you might have had freshmen coming in, asking for a course and blocking a senior for a possible elective. You had some students who had a blank in their schedule, and so during that period, they were down there trying to fill that in. So there's a whole bunch of interesting things, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure yet if that was a function of the software that was being used to do the scheduling and the transition over into Infinite Campus, because Infinite Campus was not used to do that schedule, or if it was just, they thought everything was okay, and all of a sudden, numbers, they had these people with gaps, and those people needed that course to graduate, or needed that 11th grade English class, so they started putting students in that English class, because there was no other place to put them, and they have to have English.
Will those numbers also reflect the population in study halls?
So I think I've heard first period, first period study hall.
Ben with her.
Yes, first period, thank you, Ben, thank you. So there's, yes.
I hear it's pretty heavy.
I've heard, there's a big number of study hall in here, first in the morning, and so, so I mean, I have all sorts of questions about why students don't even have a full schedule, why study hall's on there, and if they're driving here, why are they driving here, coming and sitting in the cafeteria, it seems very odd. But those are all pieces that were now.
We're trusting you to deal with it.
Oh, trust me. Yes, thank you, thank you for your trust, and believe me, it's gonna be a wonderful scheduling protocol. And I just made mention for Ben, this is actually a senior now, so, but for the people that come after him, the scheduling process for students and parents, the system like it is far easier, because they can go and schedule themselves online. The counselors can go to make sure that all the courses that they need are in there, and then, once they've verified all those are there, the administration can prioritize the courses so everything gets scheduled the way it's supposed to be. Everyone should have a look at this prior to school getting out, or at a minimum, sometime early August if people want to see it. That was, that don't think that's ever been the case here. So it's timeliness, it's information, and it's protocol.
Could be exciting.
And for both Mr. Conway and I, this is, obviously, even though it's our, we've got through the first year, this is something we're running into, because we didn't have this problem a year ago. It's just right now we're seeing this for the first time. It's definitely a result of the scheduling process.
Wayne?
Madam O'Connor, we through discussing what Mr. Buell had sent in, that we needed to comment and discuss on, it seems like we've run on a tangent. Affiliated, but definitely a tangent.
So his concern was with the elementary schools and the specialists, and the specialists not having time to do the personal things between classes. Some specialists have shortened periods.
I wasn't here for the pictures.
Yep, so bring that up. Mr. Conway will be here if anybody has that concern, he'll show the schedule, what it is, what scheduling, and where all those things are.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the high school handbook?
Handbook. Yeah, so this is out of the handbook, they're talking about academic eligibility in terms of athletics. And there's a line in there that says, in order to participate in any extracurricular activities such as a club, theatrical group, musical group, or athletic team, a student must have passed 25 credits in the previous marking period. Let's calculate eligibility for each quarter, students will be given five credits. At the end of each marking period, listed as students would be created. Students from grades 10, 11, 12, students will be eligible for the first quarter of the fall, so they must have passed 25 credits. So you're supposed to have 25 credits, only be academically eligible. All freshmen, we know, all freshmen start off their high school, they are automatically eligible. The MIA, however, has a requirement of 20 credits. Mr. Seymour is asking that we have an amendment put in here, and I understand this, and the amendment would read, due to extenuating circumstances as determined by the principal and approved by the superintendent, a student may be eligible if they meet the minimum MIAA standard. So our standard of content is 25, the MIAA is 20. What he's asking is if there is an extenuating circumstance, that he deems, okay, given the nature of what this student is experiencing, 20 is the MIA, would he be allowed to bring that to me, and I look at it and say yes or no?
Motion to, I'll make the motion to change our policy to reflect Jonathan Seymour's language?
It's to change the.
Oh, handbook, handbook. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, 100% yes. Next item on the agenda is the school improvement plan.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. So, the school improvement plans, we want, we're slated in October to do those plans, I'd still like to start those in October. We have our district data, will come out next week. So what, because of the way our schedules fall, October 1st is the first meeting. Each school, school council needs time to get together, look at that data, and I know, I think that most of them have already met or been having conversations about putting the action steps in to, that align, to develop their school improvement plans so that aligns with our district's strategic plan. What I'm asking is that instead of doing the 1st and the 15th, because the 24th to the 1st is less than a week, if we could give the 15th and then the first week in November, which is November 5th, for those presentations. That would give the school councils time to look at their actual school data, have a meaningful conversation if they need to incorporate that into their school improvement plans, that they have that opportunity to do so. And also, I'm curious, does anybody have a preference about who goes on October 15th? Do you want all elementary schools to go on the 15th, and the secondary schools to go on the 5th, or do you not, does it not matter?
Sounds like a plan.
So I would say, I would be happy to leave that up to you and the data people who have looked at the data, because some schools may have more data to get with their school council about. So I don't feel like that's, like, if you guys look at that and say, oh my gosh, the high school and middle school have, like, it's pretty cut and dry, they're not gonna have a lot of changes, but that's just me.
I can say this only because I know I said the 1st and the 15th initially, and I didn't want to make that change with them.
We trust you.
So next item on the agenda is a public comment. Seeing any public comments? So can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.